I'm doing well, how are you?
Doing fine, thanks.
Joe, can you send Alder Alboras another link for the meeting, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Nikki, I see 13. Alder's, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I have here.
Oh, and here's Alder Alboras.
Six thirty having arrived. We will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. And I will ask staff to mute themselves, please. So I can unmute everyone and have the clerk call the roll.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Furman?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Heck?
Here.
Henick?
Present.
Kemble?
Here.
Lemmer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Moreland?
Here.
Presto Jacomo?
Present.
Rommel?
Present.
Skidmore?
Here.
Tierney?
Here.
Vervier?
Here.
Abbas?
Here.
Alboras? Alder Alboras? All Day?
Yes.
Bidar?
Yes.
Carter?
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have forum.
Thank you. Can I have the staff just make sure that Alder Alboras can hear us and be heard, please? And then while I'm asking if staff can just double check that our registrant for number 58 has a link to get into the meeting. I think he had issues last time.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
In the meantime, would you like me to read the instructions?
Yes, please.
Welcome to our virtual common council meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning.
Joe, if you just pause for a minute, I will mute everyone. And then you can keep going.
Thanks. To the members of the common council and city staff, the chair, clerk, and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting council members. Please be mindful that during any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted until completed, at which time the chair will place panelists back on mute. Voting will be considered unanimous. However, if you object to unanimous vote, please use the raise hand feature when the chair asks for objections. After clicking Participants at the bottom of your screen, you can find the raise hands feature at the bottom of your participants list. Also, use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak or ask questions. This includes staff who are being asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Please wait for the chair to unmute you before speaking. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. If you are watching the live stream, please mute the stream now. There's a 30 to 40 second delay and the audio will cause feedback when you are unmuted. Members of the public who have registered to speak. When your name is called, the facilitator will find your name matching the name you provided in your registration and permit you to speak. If your name does not match, you will not be permitted to speak. Please wait until you are unmuted to begin talking. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. If you need to share documentation with the common council, please send it via email to allalders@cityofmadison.com. Unless there are questions of you, you'll be unable to speak for the remainder of the meeting. If you would like to, if you would still like to register, go to the clerk's website and click on meeting schedule. In order to keep the meeting with the best quality we can, if you do not wish to speak, we encourage you to go watch the meeting streamed live at cityofmadison.com/citychannel or at the City of Madison YouTube channel, or find us on Charter Digital 994 and AT&amp;T U-verse 99. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I see we have Alder Alboras with us. And so we should be in good shape. And I just have a couple of opening remarks. Firstly, I'd like to ask council members to activate their videos and keep them on during the course of the meeting, if you haven't already. And I would ask staff, as you are called on to speak, if you would please activate your videos as well while you're speaking or answering questions. And certainly invite the public to do that as well during their testimony. But that's not required. And I also wanted to just acknowledge that it is Public Service Recognition Week. And so I would like to recognize all of the, your public service as members of the council and all of our staff as well. And in particular, this week, we have special days for clerks, nurses, teachers, and firefighters. And so I want to give them all a shout out at the top of the meeting as well and thank them for their public service to our community. And Alder Martin suggests a virtual round of applause. I completely agree. Thank you. And with that, we will move to suspension of the rules. President Carter.
Suspension of the rules, 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, 2.25 Resolutions for Items So Designated on the Agenda.
Thank you, President Carter. Vice President Abbas?
Motion to approve?
So the, I think President Carter moved it, and I'm hoping you'll second.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
My bad.
So we've moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Are, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Please raise your hand if you object. Alder, Tierney, an objection?
Mayor, I didn't have an objection. I just wanted to request that item 58 be put on the exclusion list.
Yes, Alder, we're not at the consent agenda yet, but there is a registration on it, so it will be pulled off the consent agenda.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And, all right, so on suspension of the rules, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspending the rules? Seeing no objections, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of suspending the rules. And we'll go on to item number one. Alder Carter.
Move adoption of item number one, 60376, recognizing and expressing support for our first responders and frontline workers during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Alder Abbas?
Second adoption.
All right, moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any discussion? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move a substitute for the recognizing resolution.
All right, Alder, is the substitute available to the council? Was it sent with the consent agenda? I'm seeing nods, yes. So the Alder moves a substitute. And is there any objection by the body for considering the substitute the main motion? Please raise your hand if there's any objection. All right, seeing no objection, we'll consider that the main motion. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you wish to speak to it?
Yes, I would like to speak to it. Mayor, your opening remarks were just in line to, while we're lifting up this resolution. COVID-19 has caused a shift in all of our lives and will continue to do that. And we want to make sure that the common council pauses to recognize those first responders for stepping in and putting their, their health and safety and that of their families in the line for service. And this is so appropriate because this is the month of, of public service. And I'd like to read the substitute, if I may.
Go ahead, Alder.
All right. Substitute recognizing and expressing support for our first responders and frontline workers during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas, the public health in Madison Dane County data shows that as of April the 30th, 2020, there were 431 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Dane County. And whereas, the World Health Organization 2006 World Health Report defines a healthcare worker as an individual whose job it is to protect and improve the health of their community and to make important contributions and who is critical to the functioning of most health systems. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has rapidly intensified the daily lives of our healthcare workers, first responders, including firefighters, emergency medical technicians, law enforcement, and other emergency management personnel who are facing unprecedented challenges, stay healthy, and serve their communities. And whereas, police officers and firefighters as first responders continue to place themselves in harm's way and on the front line lines in order to keep our community safe throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, grocery and food service workers are working to meet the essential demands of keeping shelves stocked and preparing food amid COVID-19 while facing a greater infection risk for higher levels of public inter-action. And whereas, our farmers and farm workers continue working hard in the fields to harvest the produce that feeds our families every day. And whereas, public works employees continue to conduct elections, other administrative functions, pick up our trash, keep our streets, parks, and public spaces clean and functional. And whereas, postal and delivery workers continue to keep their delivery operations working by delivering medicines, social security checks, and other essential goods. And whereas, Madison Metro, other bus companies, and taxi service employees continue to provide important and critical transportation services to our community. And whereas, all first responders and frontline workers have contributed greatly to the health and safety of residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. And in doing so, have put their safety and that of their families at risk of exposure. And whereas, while most of us have the luxury of being able to keep ourselves safe by staying home, practicing physical distancing, wearing face coverings, and other protective measures, those who have chosen public service at their calling often don't have that same luxury. Protective measures like shelter in place and social distancing are not always an option for these individuals, leaving them at a higher risk for catching the novel coronavirus as they perform their critical duties. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, the common council, and the residents of the City of Madison honor, recognize, and support the contributions of all of our first responders and frontline workers during the COVID-19 pandemic. And be it further resolved that the one way to help all of our first responders and frontline workers is to say thank you every chance we get. And be it finally resolved that the mayor and common council encourage all residents to support our first responders and frontline workers by following our Stay Safer at Home guidelines. So end the reading.
Thank you, Alder. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the resolution? Please raise your hand if you object. Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution, item number one. And we will move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Carter?
Yes, thank you. Item one. Oh, sorry. Agenda items two through 12 are public hearing items. Confirmation hearing, number 16. The following items are extra majority items. Number 88, 89, 91. Agenda items part of the consent agenda with additional recommendations as noted would be item 22. Item 23. Item 58. And of course, we heard from Alder Attorney. Item 71, 97, 98. 115. Item 118. Agenda items part, items part of the consent agenda with additional recommendation continued. Item 119. And item 121. Legisstar. Item introduced from the floor, Legisstar 60409. The sponsor has requested that this item be withdrawn tonight.
Thank you, Alder. I think you need to present the consent agenda by reading the language on the agenda and then move it.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
So I will go back. So item 88.
So you don't need to read each item, Alder, but on the actual agenda, at this time, a consent agenda will be moved? I'll just read it.
Yes, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. I see it now. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
At this time, the consent agenda will be moved with the recommendation action listed for each item except items which the registrants wishing to speak, items which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included in the consent agenda by unanimous consent, and items which older persons have separated out for discussion debate purposes.
All right, so that's a motion. And Vice President Abbas?
Second.
A second. And just to clarify, we've dealt with item number one already. And so items two through 12, our public hearing items, will not be on the consent agenda. Item 16 is a confirmation hearing, also separated. And then item 58 has been requested for separation as well. And so that, at the moment, is the consent agenda. And Alder Evers? Sorry, Alder, President Carter, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask for item 85 to be excluded for discussion and move for referral till October.
Okay. And so we'll add item 85 to the exclusion list. Alder Evers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like item 91 to be pulled for the purpose of making an amendment.
Item 91. Thank you, Alder. And Attorney May?
Mayor, I believe there was another resolution to be introduced from the floor by Alder Foster.
That's correct. Thank you for catching that. Attorney May? So. All right, so just to revisit here then, to make sure that council members are looking at the updated proposed consent agenda list. And we have items two through 12, public hearing. Item 16, a confirmation hearing. And we have extra majority items, 88, 89, 91. And additional recommendations on items 22, 23. 58 is excluded, 71, 97, 98. 115, 118, 119, and 121. And we have requested for exclusion items 58, 85, and 91. And then we have one item introduced from the floor for referral, which is Legislative File 60412 by Title Only, providing a COVID-19 response for people experiencing unsheltered homelessness by allowing temporary use of specified city lands, terminable at any time by the city in order to support safe outdoor space practices, by Alder Foster, referred to the common council meeting of 519. All right, are there any other agenda items for, that council members wish to request exclusion on? Or are there any disclosures or recusals on any items on the consent agenda? Please raise your hand. Alder Martin?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. After consulting with Attorney May, I am disclosing that I am an enrolled member of the Ho-Chunk Nation. And like all enrolled tribal members, I receive per capita and services from the nation. These are distributed independent from the nation's gaming enterprises. In addition, none of the land discussed in item 58 are owned by the Ho-Chunk Nation, nor Ho-Chunk Gaming Madison. I will also note that the purpose of this project is improving safety and not for the benefit of Ho-Chunk Gaming Madison.
Thank you, Alder. There any other disclosures or recusals on any items on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, then is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and the items on the agenda with their recommendations as noted in the agenda or the proposed consent agenda exclusions list? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And that will bring us to item two, our public hearings and the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee. And we'll open a public, yep, we'll open a public hearing on item number two.
Motion to adopt.
So Alder?
Item 257917. Recommend to council to re-refer.
Alder, I need to open the public hearing, Alder.
License and Review Committee.
Alder, I need to open the public hearing first. So we'll open the public hearing on item number two, which is a new license for Baymont Inn and Suites. And we have no registrants on this item, so I will close the public hearing. And now Alder Carter, a motion on item number two.
I can't hear anyone.
Can staff text or email with Alder Carter, please? And in the meantime, Vice President Abbas, a motion on item number two?
Yes, motion to recommend council to grant with conditions.
Moved to grant with.
Oh, there you are.
So Vice President Abbas moved to grant. President Carter, a second?
Second. Sorry, I couldn't hear you guys.
That's all right. Moved and seconded to grant. Attorney May?
No, I have no man, I have nothing here, sorry. Put my hand up accidentally.
No worries. We're all learning to use the technology here. So it's been moved and seconded to grant with conditions on item number two. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number two. We'll move on to item number three, which is, so open a public hearing to, on a new license for Global Market and Food Hall. And we have no registrants on item number three. So we'll recess that public hearing. And for a motion, President Carter?
Yes, move to adopt item number three, 59690. Recommend to council to re-refer public hearing to the Alcohol License and Review Committee.
So that's a motion to re-refer, Alder?
Yes, it is.
And Vice President Abbas?
Second to re-refer.
All right, moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral. That item is re-referred. We'll move on to item number four. And open a public hearing for a new license for Alt Brew. license for Alt Brew. We have no registrants on item number four, so we'll recess that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to re-refer item number 459691 to, to the public hearing to the Alcohol License and Review Committee.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to re-refer.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral of this item? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote to re-refer. And we'll move on to item number five, open a public hearing on a new license for Mission BBQ. We have no registrants on this item, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter for a motion, please.
Move to re-refer number 55966.
This is actually a motion to grant. Alder Carter?
Yep, I see it. Move number 559692 to grant with conditions. Public hearing.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of this item? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of granting with conditions, which will take us to item number six. We'll open a public hearing, a new license for Twisted Grounds. We have a registrant, Abby, from Twisted Grounds of Gemini Drive in Madison in support and wishing to speak. Abby, you should be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
We can.
So I sent out, yeah, an email kind of outlining what I was, what my issue really was, and I think all of you guys got it. Just that, or will you guys kind of already know? Do you want me to explain more in detail, kind of, the situation?
It's up to you, ma'am.
Okay. So, yeah, I didn't know at the time when I filled out the application exactly what my legal occupancy was. And I thought our permit for seating was for inside and outside. That's always been the intention. And so I just found out that the architect didn't actually put that, the outside seating on the drawing. So I included in the attachments that I sent to you guys, new plans that they submitted with the city. So that just needs to get approved. I don't foresee any complications or anything there. So pretty much the application I filled out initially with you guys, or I went through the ALRC, only said, I believe, like 35 inside, when my actual occupancy right now is 88. I just don't even know how they got that number. But yeah, 88. And then, like I said, we submitted the new plans for the outside. So I don't know if you guys are able to, or would you be able to grant, like, the license, like, with a condition or something, just so the process, I wouldn't have to, like, go through it all again. But yeah, that's kind of my situation.
All right, thank you. Abby, are there questions for our registrant? Alder Lemmer?
If this body is not comfortable increasing that tonight, rather than re-referring, would you be comfortable with keeping the capacity as it is and filing a change of premises application later on and abiding by the current guidelines that you were given by ALRC?
Abby, that's a question to you.
Yes, sorry. You guys can hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I absolutely would be fine with that. It would just be, like, clarifying question here. So it's just granting it as is. So I think it's like, yeah, 35 or something inside. And so then, once the outdoor gets approved, seating wise, I would just submit a change of premise form that includes the additional inside to make it up to 88 or whatever gets, ends up getting approved, and then also including the outside, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm absolutely fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alder Lemmer, any further questions?
No, that'll be it.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter? We can't hear you, President. Oh, excuse me, there you go. Oh, you do it. There you go.
Hey, I have a question for Attorney May.
All right.
Are we at that point?
Are there any other questions for the registrant? All right, seeing no other questions for the registrant. Thank you, Abby. We will recess this public hearing and go to questions for staff. Attorney May, go ahead. President Carter?
So Attorney May, can you give me your opinion on granting this as it came before the ALRC and then having the applicant come back?
Yeah, in my opinion, that'd be the best way to approach this. I think trying to figure out the changes on the floor tonight would not be good, but there's no reason to send back the entire license. You can grant the license as she applied for it to the ALRC and as they approved it. And then these minor changes, she can bring those back to the ALRC at a subsequent date and doesn't have to go through the entire licensing process.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right. Thank you, President Carter. So President Carter, a motion?
So I move to grant, number 659693.
And Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of that item. And move on to item number seven, where we'll open a public hearing on a new license for Feast. And we have no registrants on that item, so we will recess the public hearing. President Carter?
I move to re-refer number 759694 to the Alcohol License Review Committee.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to re-refer.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote and the item is re-referred. Takes us to item number eight, and open a public hearing on a new license for the Tinsmith. We have no registrants. We will close that public hearing. President Carter?
I move to grant, number 859694, with conditions.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous favor and, unanimous vote in favor of granting with conditions? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And that will take us to item number nine, open a public hearing on a new license for Sato. And we have no registrants. So we will recess that public hearing. President Carter?
I move to refer item 960174 to the Alcohol License Review Committee.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to re-refer.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, that item is re-referred. Takes us to item number 10, open a public hearing on a new license for El Penzon. We have no registrants. So we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
I move to grant item 1060175 with conditions.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted with conditions. That will take us to the Report of the Plan Commission, item number 11. We will open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning of properties at 7718 Mineral Point Road. We have no registrants, so close that public hearing. President Carter?
I move to adopt with conditions, item 1160088.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. That will bring us to the Report of the Board of Public Works, item number 12, open a public hearing approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for Julia Street, Julia Circle, and Baker Avenue Assessment District. We have no registrants on this item, so I will close that public hearing. President Carter?
I move to adopt item 1260206.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number 12. And that will take us to item number 16. President Carter?
I move to adopt item 1660176, submitting the appointment of Justin, oh, I cannot pronounce that. Thank you for confirmation of a five-year term as Transit General Manager.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to confirm Mr. Sternberg as the Metro General Manager. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there any objection? Alder Rummel?
I was just wondering if we were going to hear from him. I have not had the opportunity to meet our new persons.
Absolutely. Mr. Sternberg, can you raise your hand so I can find you easily, please? Thank you very much. All right, you are unmuted. Would you like to just say a few words to the council, please?
Sure. So my name is Justin Sternberg. I'm very excited to be joining the Madison community and Metro Transit. I come from Indianapolis, where I was the vice president there in charge of all the capital projects and planning. So in that role, I was responsible for building out the first electric bus rapid transit system in the country. We had the second largest electric bus fleet in the country. We did a network redesign, we revamped our fare collection system. And so I was directly responsible for leading all of those kind of modernization efforts and new efforts. And so I'm excited to bring that experience to Madison and join a team that I, you know, in my limited time, my limited experience with the team has been fantastic. I think we've got a really great group of people and are really poised for success to, to move some of these initiatives forward.
Thank you, Mr. Sternberg. Are there any other questions? All right, seeing none, then is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of confirming Justin Sternberg as the general manager of Metro Transit? Seeing no objections, congratulations, Justin, and welcome to Madison. A virtual round of applause. All right, that will take us to item number 58. And we do have registrants on this one. So we have Daniel Brown of Oak Park Road in support wishing to speak. And then while we're getting him on the line, we have Lawrence Walker Jr. from Wittenburg, Wisconsin, in support, not wishing to speak and representing the Ho-Chunk Nation. Do we have Mr. Brown on the line?
Am I here? Can you see me?
Yes, we do. Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. Thank you for, thank you, Mayor, and thank you all the Alders for this opportunity. I want to thank Alders Tierney, Lemmers, and Bedar for sponsoring this initiative. Just wanted to explain that it's been six years that we've been working on this project here for the expansion and development of Ho-Chunk Gaming Madison. The guiding principle for the entire project has been collaboration, collaboration with the local stakeholders, with local government. A mutually beneficial outcome has been always the goal in this entire project. Part of it has been dealing with the planning itself, but it's also been working with the city staff, and it's also been relation building. One of the more pleasant, I guess, experiences in our relation building has been reaching out to the communities of color. We've had a great time with sharing our shared experiences in our histories. We could bits a little bit about some of the more high-minded, well-meaning people and talking about diversity and equity and so forth. But we also recognize the difference between, you know, talking and action. One of the other things that we've been doing right along through the past six years is giving presentations to the community, whether it's a nonprofit business, civic organizations, and of course, communities of color. In those presentations, the effort is to talk about our 12,000-year history in this region, the region we call Day Joe. It's an opportunity for us to talk about some of the policy that we've been, that we've endured through these, you know, through these years, talk about the policy to essentially eradicate Native people in this country under the US government, policies that included extermination, removal, and assimilation, deculturalization. That effort was, was to kill the Indian and save the man. And these are the kind of things we've been talking about. We also just talk about and educate the local community, just to let them know who we are and what we're trying to do, where we've been, get an understanding of who we are. A part of it has been to also inform people that we're not a rich tribe. We're not in a position to pay for other people's projects. Certainly, we are in a position to be collaborative. We're more than happy to collaborate with, with, with local municipalities of government in the way of perhaps of securing federal funding. As a matter of fact, we have BIA Roads, which is Bureau of Indian Affairs Roads Program, where we've been saving, putting, or having money set aside for the past three, four years for this particular project. The History Center is a central focal point in our, in our development. That's an opportunity for us to tell our story in our own voice. It's also an opportunity to educate people about who the Ho-Chunk Nation is, who we are, where we've been, where we're going. It's an opportunity for people to understand us. And so hopefully, it'll shape policy going forward. And it's something also that's very important to us in terms of economic development for the local area. When I talk about collaboration, this is an effort for us to, for an influx, a significant influx in tourism. We envision this as being a tourist destination locally, statewide, nationally, and yes, even internationally. I think we have that kind of appeal with our fascinating history. We've been diligently going through this process of the city. We've achieved the point of approval of our GDP. We're at a critical juncture right now with the, with the AV interchange. And in order for us to proceed with the site implementation plan, the SIP, we need the AV interchange. This is an extremely critical project for the Ho-Chunk Nation, for this, securing the financial future of our peoples so that we can continue this, this path of healing. It's not all about money. It is about safety. I have 300 employees that come and go out of this one-in-one-out road, about 8,000 visitors, 7,000 cars a day. It's absolutely critical that this, that this project go forward. There's no such thing as a perfect plan. I understand that. But I think for the greater good, and I think for a community that talks a lot about diversity and inclusion and equity, I think it's, I think it's very important to put your money where your mouth is. And I'm asking for, for Alder's support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We also have Representative Darren Bringar of Wisconsin Rapids. He's a, I believe, a representative on the Ho-Chunk Nation Legislature in support not wishing to speak. Are there any questions? Oh, and we have Sarah Lemieux from Black River Falls, also representing the Ho-Chunk Nation in support not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Brown. And President Carter, a motion, please?
Yes, thank you. I moved to return to the lead as recommended for approval.
The motion is to adopt from the Board of Public Works, which is the lead. Public Works, which is the lead.
Okay, sorry. I move to adopt from the Board of Public Works, number 58 602224.
Thank you. Vice President Abbas?
Yes, second to adopt.
Moved in seconded to adopt. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Alder Tierney, questions for staff?
Yes, I was just going to ask if Tom is listening in, if he could just provide a general overview.
Mr. Lynch, could you raise your hand, please, so I can find you? I thought, there you are. Go ahead, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you. I appreciate the sentiments of the Ho Chunk Nation and their support for the project. The primary purpose of this project is safety. These two intersections are the second and third most dangerous in the city of Madison. They are among the top most dangerous intersections in this whole state of Wisconsin. For 20 years, really, we've been advocating for the Wisconsin DOT to really address the safety problems that are critical. In fact, in the last five years, there's been 71 crashes, 85 injuries, and two fatalities. In fact, one, just last year, there was a fatality of a city employee. You know, had children, you know, was a coach, a good father. So while this will support the Yara Hills Plan, it's incorporated in the Yara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan, this is really on a radar because of the critical safety need. The proposal that's before you tonight, this is a DOT project, and it is funded by the DOT. And so the proposal before you tonight just allows Madison to pay for the frontage road that connects to the interchange. This frontage road will provide access to properties around the Ho Chunk Nation, but also the Yara Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Are there any other questions for staff? Alder Rumel?
I guess I heard a lot of buzz about this as far as the concerns about the pedestrian and bike multimodal safety. And I'm wondering if Mr. Lynch could talk some about what, how that looks after last night's meeting, which I unfortunately did not able, was not able to watch.
Yes, I think there's a desire to provide a direct link for, to the Ho Chunk, properties around the Ho Chunk through an extension of Meyer Road. The current proposal that is being advocated or brought forward with by Wisconsin DOT includes basically bike lanes throughout the facility on County AB bike and a side path on AP and Mill Pond Road. So there are bicycle and pedestrian facilities on the proposal that is being brought forward with the with Stott or County by Wisconsin Department of Transportation. I think there are some that would like to see a Meyer Road overpass be constructed as well. That would be an 18, about an $18 million investment, and it would be just west of of the AB intersection and east of the interstate. That is in our plan. It would be a local road connection. The DOT does not view it as their responsibility because it is a local road. And I don't think they want to invest in it because a Meyer Road overpass would solve kind of half of the safety problems where this County AB interpath interchange solves all of the safety problems. And so you know, perhaps, yes, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, Alder, any additional questions?
Yeah, you're kind of not early getting at the question I asked about the meeting last night. Our notes show that it was not, no recommendation came forward. Can you just summarize? And then could the Alders who serve on that committee also speak to that question of what what happened and were the issues addressed to the satisfaction of the concerns that I just expressed? Let's start with Mr. Lynch.
Okay, I, I think the proposed project includes bike and pedestrian facilities to a greater extent than I have seen on other Wisconsin DOT projects. They are incorporated. I think I'll say the vote last night at the Transportation Policy Planning and Policy Board probably might fall into two categories and perhaps clarify. But the two categories would be, one, some do not feel like a freeway should continue to be extended, or maybe I should say, don't feel like a freeway type of facility is the right concept for US 1218 east of the interstate. And that's perhaps one concern of those who did not vote for it. And then perhaps another concern is they feel like a Meyer Road overpass would be either a better alternative, or they feel like it should be constructed in addition to the County AB interchange. And Alder Foster, you can correct me if I misrepresented, I think, the discussions from last night.
Just one clarification before I give up the floor. When I look at the, your PowerPoint that's in Legistar, I don't really see Meyer Road. It could be really the AB's real name, but I'm just wondering where it is in relation to the interchange?
Are you looking at the, if you look at the, that's a good point. If you looked at my presentation from last night,
What's in Legistar, Tom? Not what you did last night. I'm sorry, because that's not in Legistar.
It, it should be, because it was yeah, it should be. I guess if you were to, a good way to show it is that the Meyer Road would be on the west end of the landfill, whereas the AB interchange would be on the east end of the landfill. If I were to explain it, is that helpful for you?
Yeah, thanks.
Anything further, Alder?
No, thanks.
All right, thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to lower my hand. I'd like for the Alders who were, who are on that commission to speak, and then I'll come back in. I was on that Zoom call last night, but I really would like to hear from the Alders and their, their views. So I'm going to lower my hand and raise it back if my questions are not answered.
Okay, thank you, Alder. Right, are there any other questions for staff at this time? All right, I see no additional questions for staff at this time. So thank you, Tom. And we'll go to discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Alder Foster?
Yeah, I guess I'll try and answer Alder Rumel's questions in terms of what the discussion was, the TPPB and the rationale behind my vote against the proposal. It's a really complicated question. And I think on the face of it, it is a safety improvement project, and that's something that I'm very supportive of. We put money aside in our budget for this year for a, kind of getting a head start on Vision Zero. And Tom is very, very much correct that the, these two intersections are among the worst in the Madison area in terms of the safety record. So I certainly agree with and support the need to address the situation. We also heard from the Ho Chunk Nation and the opportunity of providing more motor vehicle access to their site, and how that would be helpful and important to their future plans for continued development out there. And I think this project also helps satisfy things on that end. The third element of the project, and the one that I really focused on, and what's the primary driver in my vote against the project, was the freeway expansion component of this project. So this is a, an expansion. So right now, there are two at grade crossings with very high speeds along this road. This plan would close, mostly close one of those crossings and make the AB intersection a great separated freeway style intersection with quite high capacity roundabouts on it. WISDOT wants to ultimately continue that freeway expansion further to the east and ultimately make the next two intersections freeway style as well, and basically continue that all the way out to Highway N is their ultimate goal. This is a sort of really well understood issue in transportation circles, and the really destructive nature that freeways have on urban environments is very well understood. In District 15, I have Highway 30 and Highway 51 that really cut through the middle of my district. And it's really clear to me the negative impact that those highways have in my district and on the east side of Madison. In fact, the Stone Road corridor work that was underway probably eight or nine years ago, that was sort of put on itself, really included a recommendation from the city to consider getting rid of those great separated crossings for Stone Road and to return it to a more urban boulevard kind of environment to really make, make the space more hospitable to people in the area and give it up less to car traffic. There were conversations last night also with the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan, and this was called out as a, as a goal for Packers Aberg as well, which is currently a great separated intersection. And one of the goals stated there was to hopefully, at some point in the future, go the opposite way, and again, bring that back to a urban boulevard kind of arrangement. So I think it's well understood from planners and transportation professionals why we generally don't like to see freeways in urban environments. And yet, this is the proposal that's, that's in front of us. And so while I think it's reasonable to expect that it would have some safety improvements, there are other ways to achieve those safety improvements. And I think it would be a mistake to accept the freeway expansion simply to try and address some other safety concerns that are very real at these intersections. I think it's, it may seem like not a big deal right now because this area is very rural. I feel like it's out in the middle of nowhere. Cars fly through at 65 miles an hour. But the Yara, Yara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan, which was just approved only a couple short years ago, calls for thousands of new units of housing out there and thousands of new jobs. And this is expected to be a significant growth area for the city. And that plan very much was dependent on the connections provided by Meyer Road, which moving forward with this project as it's proposed, as Tom mentioned, really will, will anything we do with Meyer Road in the future is going to be all in the city's hands and out of the city's pocket. And WISDOT is basically likely not going to take care of crossing this freeway that they've created. And I have serious concerns with our ability to implement anything even close to the Yara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan with only one intersection, this AB interchange. So in a nutshell, supportive of the desire to address the safety issues, but not supportive of continued freeway
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tierney?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, let me start. In a past life, I, I used to work in the state legislature, and I worked for former State Representative Rob Kahl. And on more than one occasion, I sat down with DOT staff when Secretary Gottlieb was Secretary. And we went over numerous plans to deal with the problems at these intersections. And I got to tell you, Secretary Gottlieb, when he was a member of the legislature, I think he was probably one of the more fiscally conservative members, not saying a lot. But as an engineer, he put public safety first as Secretary. And I admire him for that. Even though I didn't agree with him politically and a lot of other things, he put safety first. And this is a project that should have been undertaken years ago. I use that intersection quite a bit. And Mr. Lynch had mentioned the fatality that we had with the loss of a city employee. That particular year, when that happened, I had driven up to my hometown of Wausau quite often. And on the way back, I'd come through that area. And six different times coming back, each time, there was a major accident that I encountered, including the aftermath of the accident that took the life of our, our city employee. So I am well aware that this is something that needs to move forward, needs to move forward now. In terms of the Ho Chunk Nation, I've sat down with Mr. Brown and looked at the plans. And that will be a tremendous benefit, not only for members of the Ho Chunk Nation, but for our city as well. I envision a day where school groups, other people, they come in, they take their tours to the Capitol, they go to the Historical Society Museum downtown. But then they're also making a trek to the cultural center that the Ho Chunk Nation's going to have. And that will create not only opportunities for the Ho Chunk Nation, but I envision other development occurring with businesses popping up, small businesses locally owned, that will cater to the needs of people that are leaving our downtown area and going to the Ho Chunk Nation to check out the cultural center. So obviously, this is something that we need to, to address for the Ho Chunk Nation. But then also the Yara Hills development. Most people think all the city of Madison is in Madison Metropolitan School District. Most people think all the city of Madison is in Madison Metropolitan School District. That's not the case. The, the development that's planned, the majority of it is in the McFarland School District. And again, when that development goes forward, we're going to have a significant amount of traffic going on A B, crossing 1218, going down to schools that currently are McFar, in McFarland. We'll see high school kids that don't always make the best decisions when they're driving a car, crossing 1218. Parents dropping off their kids, that's the way they'll go. We'll see school bus traffic. So it's imperative that we undertake steps to, to eliminate that at-grade crossing there especially as well. You know, and the other thing, I have to applaud Governor Evers and Secretary Thompson for being willing to, to move ahead with this. You know, they recognize the dire need to get this done, and I applaud them for taking the initiative and, and working towards getting this done. It's, it's something that it's, it's truly a dangerous intersection for people that live in my district, that when they, they want to go into other areas of the city, you know, not everybody goes to, over to Stone Road and goes up. There's a significant number of people, they, they use Highway E B. And it's, it's playing Russian roulette right now. You know, I haven't done the math on it, but here we are concerned about COVID-19 and the odds of getting that disease and actually dying from it, and the millions of dollars we're putting into it. Well, I, I'd have to say for anybody that frequently uses our local roadways and has to cross 1218 and go through that intersection, I'd, I'd, I think that the risk of death is just as great, or if not greater, with the way that's, that's done. I can't speak strongly enough for moving forward with this. You know, frankly, I, I think when Secretary Gottlieb had the rug pulled under him, from under him, and was told this project can go forward. You know, to be blunt, I think the state leadership at that time had the lid on their hands. Given all the accidents that have occurred since that time, we have the opportunity to move forward now, and we need to grasp it, and we need to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor. This isn't in my district, but it is a daily travel route for folks in my district. And as everyone has spoken to, it's one of the most dangerous areas in the city. Not only that, it's one of the most dangerous intersections in the state. This is a crucial opportunity to leverage grant and state funding in order to make these improvements, which are so long overdue and so long needed and will undoubtedly save lives. This intersection is only getting busier and more dangerous, as Mr. Lynch spoke to. You know, in the last few years, there have been almost 100 crashes, 85 injuries and two deaths. And to be not supporting these improvements and endangering more people is just not acceptable. The city has sought state support for improving this intersection for, I believe he said, two decades. WISDOT support is extremely difficult to come by. And as an example of how long it can take, I have a project in my district that requires WISDOT support, and it's been in the neighborhood and city plan since the mid 1990s. And it's looking like it might happen, you know, maybe around 2030 if we're being optimistic. So rejecting this now means that we're turning down a very rare opportunity. I also feel that this is an equity issue. Ho-Chunk's facilities employ large numbers of Ho-Chunk tribal members, as well as Native Americans from other tribes, and they deserve to be safer. In this area, most people don't, most people who come here and work are not able to access the area of this city by means other than car, other than by car. So, and yes, the project will also, you know, help with improvements that Ho-Chunk wants to make to make their, improvements to their facilities possible, allowing them to employ more people. And I do think that's another reason to support this. And I am supportive of, you know, pedestrian and bicycle improvements whenever possible, but I feel like that's making the perfect the enemy of the good in this situation. I'm just asking for my colleagues to reduce the risk of more lives being endangered by this dangerous intersection needlessly. So I hope everyone will support this project and the critical safety improvements it brings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Campbell. Alder Campbell, go ahead.
Yes, so I also voted against this last night because this project is kind of a while the, the interchange is undisputable, is, really needs to be addressed. The, the, the unsafe nature of accessing 12 and 18, not only at Mill Pond there, but also at Vilas Hope and at Sigal Cow and at all the entry points along this really dangerous stretch of highway need to be addressed. And we need to create better connectivity to the north when those neighborhoods get built. But to me, doing it in the context of freeway expansion, what we're doing is making one intersection, improving one intersection at the cost of the entire area becoming more dangerous. So at the same time, the city, we're, you know, we put money in the budget to, to look at Vision Zero intersections and stretches of road and to, to make them more safe. We don't increase speed, we reduce speed. And this project is specifically designed to increase speed, and it is going to make that whole stretch of road even more unsafe. And when this freeway is built, the people from, you know, from the intersections farther to the east are going to be dealing with even faster traffic with people coming off a freeway-type situation until they make the whole thing a freeway. And people who are on bikes and peds and horses, there are horses out there, people ride horses around there, are going to be in an even more dangerous situation. So I think, yes, it's, it, it's a really dangerous place in our city. The intersection needs to be addressed. This is a bad way of addressing it, and I know Tom Lynch has worked so hard on this for probably even since before he was employed by the city. He's been working on this project and, and it's only because of, and I don't know if only, but very likely because of his work that we even have the design that's in front of us now. We had to fight for that because WISDOT was just going to make the freeway, really. And we had to fight hard. Tom put a lot of effort into fighting hard for it. But I, I can't endorse the freeway expansion is the, is the bottom line of my vote because that is going to make the overall context of safety in that area even worse. And so I wish, I know this is all part of applying for a build grant. It's dependent, the project is dependent on getting a build grant. If that doesn't happen, I really would like for us to prioritize doing what we can do. Tom Lynch has says that the Meyer Road overpass, it's going to be on us. Let's put resources towards building that and connecting that up with the Ho-Chunk land. This needs to stay at the top of our priority list for, for transportation improvements in the city, but it really shouldn't come at the cost of making the whole area more dangerous for everyone else.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I join with my colleagues Alder Tierney and Alder Lemmer to support this resolution. As it's been said, this intersection is really dangerous. As someone who has used this intersection many times, I've been really scared trying to make left-hand turns from Mill Pond Road onto 12 and 18. It is scary. Again, this is one of the most dangerous intersections in the state, and that we would postpone a partnership with the state where the costs for safety improvements are going to be largely borne by Wisconsin DOT. Just because it isn't perfect, is unconscionable. This intersection has been dangerous for years and really needs to be improved. Any delays will risk the safety of those who work or visit the businesses south of Highway 1218. And that's just not, that's not just Ho-Chunk Gaming Madison. That also includes a hotel, a gas station, and a Harley-Davidson store. So this isn't just an issue that focus, that, that that affects Ho-Chunk Nation. I would like to also say that I'm really uncomfortable with a lot of this conversation because if we look at it from, with an equity lens, this intersection disproportionately affects Native people, many of whom work or, or go, visit Ho-Chunk Gaming Madison. That we would ignore that effect because it doesn't fully address bike and pedestrian concerns, and because it is going to be a freeway, we're just not going to improve that intersection? It really bothers me that we can ignore the safety of those that travel this intersection who happen to be disproportionately Native American because it doesn't address all of these concerns. And I cannot help but say that this smacks of privilege and institutional racism. This, this isn't complicated. We have gotten Wisconsin DOT onboard to work with us. I used to work for Wisconsin DOT. I was a tribal liaison, a statewide tribal liaison. I worked with all 11 federally recognized tribes for a wide variety of, of concerns related to transportation. We worked with airports. The Austin-Shabel Airport in Green Bay is on the Oneida Reservation. We worked with transit systems, again, the Oneida Nation, Oneida Nation's Transit, Menominee Nation, Red Cliff and Bad River. And we work a lot with transportation safety, obviously. And the, this, the Transportation Safety Program for the Wisconsin DOT Tribal Affairs Section, it focuses on multimodal transportation issues for the tribes in Wisconsin with an emphasis on improving data collection and submission of the data to the state. This is, is information that has not frequently, or has been disproportionately not been sent to the state. We haven't been able to study it historically as well as we've studied all of this elsewhere. We're also, it, it's also working to analyze the safety of transportation, excuse me, transportation systems and to plan and address those safety needs in Indian country. This program is done a lot and it, and actually is considered probably the best example of government-to-government relations between the state government and tribal governments. It's a robust system. There are multiple, not only statewide tribal liaisons, but regional tribal liaisons. While I was there, we worked on various things like safety summits, working with the Federal Highways Administration, Bureau of Indian Affairs, and, and Wisconsin DOT and tribes, BIA, all of it. We also have worked on programs to, that are culturally appropriate to tribal members and encourage tribes and help them produce their own information to work on transportation safety. I know that one of the projects I was involved with were PSAs for students. And we had middle school students create videos regarding traffic safety, regarding what message that they wanted to convey. So this is a program that is really robust and has worked really hard to improve things related to transportation safety, both on and adjacent to tribal lands. I, I just, this, I ca, I cannot, I don't understand the idea of letting perfection be the enemy of progress. We absolutely must protect the safety of those who travel through this intersection and improve it where we can, when we can. And to do it with money that is being given to us to help us, we have, we just have to. We have to take this opportunity to protect people's safety, and I encourage all of my colleagues to vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alvarez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll first start off by saying I'm in huge support of this. So I've actually asked Nikki Perez if she could list me as a co-sponsor. I'm assuming my colleagues won't have any issue with that. I wish I'd have done that sooner. But at, at the end of the day, I think that I will echo some of the other comments that my other colleagues have, have brought up that while this project may not necessarily meet some of the most preferred needs as it pertains to, you know, access for, for cycling, et cetera. I think that we really need to just look at the issue here and that this is like one of the most dangerous intersections within our municipality and within our state. And that is a blemish that we, as a council, should not take lightly, especially given the fact that we have a partner with the state agency who's, who's gonna help us on this path financially at a significant rate. It would be a very big oversight, in my opinion, for us to do this. This is clearly nowhere near my, my district. If it were in my district and there were apprehension from other council members, you know, I would, you know, really beg you and plead with you to, to consider otherwise. I would be quite frustrated. And I understand everybody on this council has their own perspective, and I respect that. I respect that a lot, actually, that we hopefully from having a lot of varying views and perspectives, we come to really good, healthy, solid policymaking. But this is a dangerous intersection. At the end of the day, it's dangerous, very, very dangerous. And we've been warned by city staff on this, so I think that we need to heed that and say, look, let's take action on this and not try and look for a more, you know, optimal planning situation when we just have a very dangerous situation that's before us, and there are people who are in danger on a daily basis as they go through this intersection. So while I respect the concerns that other folks have had, I highly encourage council members to take action on this, to move forward to, to get this, get this area to a more safe and sensible situation. So with that being said, I want to thank the colleagues who've already listed themselves as co-sponsors, and again urge my colleagues to, to be in favor of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd, I'd like to thank the Alders who spoke on behalf of this Tierney, Lemmer, and Martin especially. I sat through the presentations at the Finance Committee and the Transportation Commission. And it is, it's really not a complex question. Freeway, freeway expansion versus bikes, peds, and horses. This is a big deal and it is long overdue, 20 years overdue. But public safety first, the numbers that have been cited repeatedly. We cannot ignore those numbers. And when I hear that the, the city and the state collaborating, and then when I hear that, well, the city should make this a top priority, it is not made it a top priority in 20 years. And in reality, it will not be a top priority after we are going through and on the other side of COVID-19. But I want to go back to what I heard when, when Daniel Brown spoke and then when Alder Martin spoke. And so, and thank you both for the passion that you, you spoke. But I want to drop these, and I, and they really spoke to me, and I want to put this in the spirit of my colleagues. He said collaboration. He said diversity. He said communities of color. He said inclusion, equity. He said the opportunity to tell their story in their own voice. He said a lot of things, but mostly what I walked away with is that he, in a small, brief session, educated us about a, a land that originally did not even belong to us. And for, and, you know, this is maybe not perfect, but when you are measuring the, the second and third most dangerous place in the state and, and resonate that, that is huge. The most dangerous location intersection in the state. The cause of one death and numerous accidents. Colleagues, take a look at this and then ask yourself if there is another, another crash. And, and hopefully, God forbid, there is a tragedy. We're part of that decision of waiting another 20 years to address this. This is a big deal. It is serious. There was a lot of conversation back and forth with the commissioners last night. It was almost a split vote. But in the reality, you have to circle back to one thing that you need to walk away with, and the walk away is, is that it is an equity issue. Thank you, Alder Martin, and also for Daniel to bringing that up straightforward. It is. And the second thing is, is that it is a public safety issue. And in that, I will ask my colleagues to please, please support this. Make this first. Work out the other details, but this is high on the priority, and we should be responsible for that. There will be no extra money to make this a priority. We don't want to go another 20 years waiting to make this happen, especially when we've got partners that will another 20 years waiting to make this happen, especially when we've got partners that are willing to put money into the bucket. Thank you, and please add my name as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas.
Thank you very much. I entered my name after Finance Committee when I saw this particular proposal. I entered my name as a sponsor because when I moved to Madison, for a very short period of time, I was working with Red Bull Energy Drink, and there is quite a bit of warehouse in an industrial area around there, and I used that intersection very often for work purposes for a short period of time. And when I was using that, I always thought, that's not safe, man. That's really dangerous. I also acknowledge and understand Alder Grant, Highway 30 and Packer. My district is also facing similar challenges, which he mentioned, and I understand his also sentiment, and it's also logical what he's saying about neighborhoods and how we can create connectivity, how we can make it better. But at the same time, this money is attached with that particular design. It can be better? Yes, it can be, but at the moment, that's what we have, and the money is there. As Alder Trini mentioned, for the last 20 years, now this is an opportunity, and we should, this is one of those situations where I wish there could be a better solution around it, but what we have at the moment is the best option. And that will, from a public safety point of view, solve a lot of problems and hopefully future accident and make people safe. And I will support that proposal. That's pretty much from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter.
Thank you, and I'll be extremely short. I just want to suggest that anyone who hasn't driven out this direction needs to drive out there. I go out 12 and 18 probably at least once a week, and I have gone out there on a clear day and come back, and there's a head-on collision or there's some other accident. So I'm not going to go into all the diatribe that's already been mentioned, but I will say this. Take the time to go out there and see for yourself what everyone here has talked about. It's just plain and simple, dangerous, not just for the employees of Hochunk, but anyone who's trying to get to Cambridge, anyone who's trying to cut across. It is dangerous for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it too late to ask staff a couple of questions? I just have some follow-up questions for Mr. Lynch.
Is there any objection from the body to revisiting questions for staff? I'm not seeing any objection, so Mr. Lynch, there you are. Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, everyone. And I'm not opposed to this. I'm now curious about how this works, because this is just about the intersection, right? So the future county AB, and here's my first question, Tom, that's a future process for making it whatever it might become. Is that right, Tom? Part of this whole phasing?
So the Highway 12 and 18 is actually not under our jurisdiction. It's under the DOT's jurisdiction. Some state roads like Packers Avenue are under our jurisdiction, and we can make changes. So this basically allows, this resolution allows the mayor, and I think the city attorney or maybe the clerk, to enter into an agreement if the DOT pursues an interchange. The interchange would be about $37 million. I believe our portion could range from 3.5 to 5.5.
Can I just interrupt you? I don't mean to be rude, but I understand that. I'm asking about future actions, and I just want to get the big picture.
Oh, yeah. So perhaps this will answer your question, and tell me if it does. WISDOT did do a corridor study, a freeway conversion study for Highway 12, 18, from the interstate Cottage Grove, and they have an approved environmental document. There are about three portions to that. One is this county AB intersection or interchange. One is an overpass, I believe, at Hope Road or Vilas Road, and one is an overpass at one other place. This is, the Highway AB interchange by far carries the greatest number of volumes. For instance, Mill Pond Road is about 7,000 cars, and then AB is about 4,000 cars. So total, it'd be 11,000 cars. The other two intersections that are in the freeway conversion plan, I'd be surprised if they approached 500 to 1,000 cars. So this one, so while Vilas Road and, I can't remember the other road, are in the plan, I do not believe that they would be a high priority investment for WISDOT in the next five to 10 years. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. I guess bottom line is that if county AB improvements come, there will be a DOT and partnership process. So the concerns that were raised might have an opportunity to be heard?
Well, we, this gives us the ability to enter into an agreement with them. This does not give us the ability to dedicate land to them. Like, for instance, the golf course, there'd be a little bit of strip land that might be needed from the golf course. This gives us the ability to go into a project agreement. The DOT does have a public involvement process, and we can make comments on it. I guess I haven't given you the answer perhaps as straightforward as you want.
I'm just trying to get the big picture. We're approving our share of doing a frontage road for this intersection. There are other elements to improvements that could be, who knows, 40 years, as we've heard from other examples. So I was just trying to get an understanding, but I don't know that I'm going to pursue that anymore since you said what you said. My second question is, when we do the frontage road, is this like the plans and specs, or are we done with it? Or do we have another, does like the neighborhood and the immediate property owners have any more input into what that looks like?
Yeah, particularly Mill Pond Road and the North Access Road, if we wanted to change them, I'm sure that the DOT would be very accommodating for that. The typical section for Mill Pond Road is fairly generous. It has, I believe, a 10-foot shared-use path as well. I can't remember if it has bike lanes or not, but if we wanted a different typical section for Mill Pond Road, I'm sure the DOT would be very amenable to that.
Okay. And then finally, I mean, would there be part of the transportation planning board's process to talk about the connection between the land use and transportation connections to the Yohara neighborhood or Yohara Hills neighborhood plan going forward? Is that something on your future list of things to do?
I think one thing that could be done right now that we could actually just make part of our work plan is the interchange is part of the Yohara Hills neighborhood plan, so that is there. Meyer Road is also part of it. It's a local road connection, and we could, as a city, officially map and map out what a Meyer Road, the right-of-way that a Meyer Road overpass would require, so that future improvements by property owners on the south side, as well as improvements by the landfill on the north side, do not preclude that ability. We could also, if we wanted to, we could consider a Meyer Road overpass, either pedestrian and bicycle overpass, or a motor vehicle overpass in our capital budget. If we were to do a motor vehicle overpass, it would, if I believe correctly, it'd be $15 to $18 million, but I suspect a pedestrian bicycle overpass, if we wanted to do one, there would be less. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everyone's forbearance. It helped me a lot. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martin on the question.
I would just like to be, or would like to ask to be added as a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday.
No, so I was just gonna let you know, I will turn my video camera off for a minute because I'm breaking fast.
Thank you, Alder, and enjoy your breaking of the fast today.
Thank you.
Alder Alboras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will keep this very short. Obviously, I urged my colleagues to support this, and I will not change that stance whatsoever. And what I did fail to mention in my initial comments was echoing what a lot of, what Alder Lemmer and what Alder Martin said is that, and this is obviously, since this being a very, very dangerous intersection, I think we need to take swift action on this, but is that we will have members of our indigenous community who will be commuting on here, and that it's been shared that there's a disproportionate amount of communities of color who would be impacted by this intersection as well. And so I just think that that's, in addition to the safety issue, that really should be another thing that my colleagues should consider as we make this decision this evening. So I just wanted to go on the record stating that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hack.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just quickly recognize what Alders Foster and Kemble had to say about transportation planning and urban planning in general. It's this intersection and the expansion of the freeway is very regressive planning, and it's going to have a big impact on those future neighborhoods that are going to pop up east and north in all directions from there. I do not think it is by any means an elegant solution. And that said, I recognize the public safety concerns that many of you have referenced, and Director Lynch did, and I recognize the equity concerns, and I'm going to support this reluctantly, but we've really got to recognize that these types of roads are bad from a climate change perspective and from an urban planning perspective in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Just wanted to respond to a couple of comments. So, one, I just wanted to clarify my objection to the proposal is not about imperfection or about a lack of pet or bike facilities. The proposal will actually improve bike and pet connectivity over what we have today. So that's not my objection at all. My objection really is, again, that this is an unsustainable approach to transportation. Freeway expansion will increase vehicle miles traveled, and that is the most connected condition related to traffic safety. The more that vehicle miles travel increase, the more crashes, injuries, and fatalities we have, and continuing to increase our vehicle miles traveled is moving us in the wrong direction. Not only that, this is more than just a simple freeway expansion. It's also the worst kind of freeway expansion in that because we don't, we will not have a Meyer connection on here, it's going to require frontage roads on both sides. So this is the difference between the Belt Line, say, between Whitney and Odana versus the Belt Line between Park and Todd Drive. We're talking about 350-foot-wide corridor of concrete that's only needed because there's no other way to get to this piece of land. And if we have the Meyer Road connection, you would not need those frontage roads, which is what we're shouldering on our costs at a local level. And that's really the other unsustainable element to this is the financial piece. It's really well understood that we are in a massive infrastructure debt, primarily driven by our road system. We cannot pay for the system we have, and continuing to expand it is the definition of unsustainable, simply from a financial perspective. So we are taking 3.5 to 5.5 million of our dollars that are not going to go to other local infrastructure projects that are needed, desperately needed. We're going to put that into a new local frontage road that's only needed because the state built a freeway and didn't get a connection across it for us. So we're covering, trying to make up and maintain access to a piece of land that is really separated and segregated only because of this freeway, and we're supposed to bear the cost of it. If in the future, we decide to build that Meyer Road connection, again, with local dollars, other $16 to $18 million, or $12 million, that we're all in for $16 to $18 million just to get access to this thing because the state put a freeway there. This is all coming on us, and it's not just the initial construction cost. That's ongoing maintenance of all, everything we build, we need to continue to maintain. So I hear everybody. I totally get, obviously, there's a lot of support for this. There's no question it's going to pass. But I really do, I wanted to share it because we can't keep doing it. We can't do it at a local level, at a regional level, at a state level. I know it's hard to turn down what looks like free money, but we are just building ourselves into a hole that we're not going to climb out of. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Madam Mayor, I was going to call for the question, but I see that Alda Bedar is in the queue, and I will lower my hand for her to respond.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bedar has lowered her hand as well, so I believe that brings us to the question that has been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number 58? Alder Foster and Alder Kemble object, so we will have a roll call vote. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, no. I will unmute you, and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Foster?
No.
No. Furman?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Hack?
Aye.
Aye. Hennick?
No.
No. Kemble?
No.
No. Lemmer?
Aye.
Aye. Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Moreland?
Aye.
Aye. Prestajakamo?
No.
No. Rummel?
No.
No. Skidmore?
Aye.
Aye. Tierney?
Aye.
Aye. Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Abbas? Alder Abbas?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Alboras? Alboras?
Aye.
Aye. Balday?
Aye.
Aye. Bedar?
Aye.
Aye. Carter?
Aye.
Aye. That is 15 ayes and five noes.
Thank you, clerk. 15 ayes and five noes. The item passes, and I will put you back all on mute. Alder Foster, did you have something additional, or was that just your objection still? All right. Thank you. All right, so that dispenses with item number 58, takes us to item number 80. Um, all right. So that dispenses with item number fifty-eight, takes us to item number eighty-five. Alder Carter for a motion.
Yes, um, for eighty-five, I move to, well, I move to adopt item eighty-five, five nine three zero zero. This is the one that I asked to be referred.
So Alder, if you'd like to make that motion now?
Yep. I move to refer to October.
Uh, all right. So it's moved to refer, uh, to October. Alder Skidmore, is that a second?
This is a second, yes.
All right. So moved and seconded to refer to Alders, could we say the first council meeting in October?
Exactly.
Right. Moved and seconded to refer to the first council meeting in October. Uh, is there, uh, so Alder Carter, did you wish to speak to this item?
Um, yes. So we had a email from the PSRC stating that they didn't get a chance to discuss this. I'll have Alder Harrington McKinney talk further on this. Um, they had, um, it got to them, I think, twice, but because of their agenda, they didn't get a chance to discuss it. And Chief Wall was supposed to come back and talk to them about it. I want to give them ample opportunity to, um, be able to address their concerns for this, um, prior to the adoption of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. All right. Alder, Harrington McKinney.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, um, this item, so, uh, let, first, let me say that, um, Alder Kemble did come and make a presentation at the Public Safety Review Committee. Um, on the subsequent agendas, the agenda was so loaded with public comment and other items, uh, we did not, and so this is why the, uh, recommendation of the Public Safety Review Committee, uh, was, was not made, because we did not have an opportunity to discuss it. The reason that I am raising my hand is that pushing off till October, that is, we're in May, June, July, August, September, October, that's five to six months. So I have a concern with pushing that off to October. And my concern really goes into the question is, when will the Public Safety Review Committee be stood up? And is that a question that, uh, someone can answer for me? Because pushing that off for five to six months is a major concern, uh, for me. And, uh, also, I'm sure the other, um, Public Safety Review Committee members as well, uh, would like to have this as an agenda item, a priority for us to discuss and make a recommendation to the council. And pushing it off six months is just too long. Uh, may I ask the question, when will the Public Safety Review Committee, uh, be able to meet?
Alder, I believe I can address the question. And so first, just to clarify, I think that the referral motion is not, um, meant to suggest that PSRC would not meet before October. It's simply to give adequate time, uh, for the conversation, although I don't want to put words in Alder Carter's mouth. Um, but the PSRC is on the list of committees that CCEC requested be stood up in the next, uh, round. Um, and we are expecting, uh, PSRC to meet in June, um, I think, if not sooner, um, but certainly by June. Alder, does that answer your question?
That, uh, that does answer my, my question. Um, and so, uh, rather than pushing it out to, uh, so my question is, is this, um, the, um, the president said the October would be the referral date to the council, uh, uh, so there's no opportunity and leeway to make that. So if we're not going to get stood up until June, um, July, August, September, could we not have it, um, earlier than October?
Yeah, Alder, I'll, I'll let the President Carter address that if she wishes. Uh, I think that's really a question for her. Anything further, Alder Harrington McKinney?
No, that is my question, that I would like for the, uh, the referral not to be, uh, in October, to move it up at least a month.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Skidmore.
Uh, thank you. I seconded this and I agree with, uh, Alder McKinney. And, uh, I appreciate your comments that PSRC would be able to, uh, take this up in June. Um, I, you know, uh, my intent in seconding this is to make sure that PSRC is able to, uh, have this discussion and then we could bring it back earlier. Uh, would you be thinking July? Uh, if that's okay to ask you a question?
Uh, is, who's the question for, Alder?
Um, somebody that could answer. If PSRC will, uh, take this up in June, we could take it up, uh, in early July. The council could.
Alder, I'm not sure that that's a question that we can get answered tonight, um, without having more knowledge of what's on the PSRC agendas. Um, I, i-if, if I could just make the suggestion that if the, if the desire is to have referrals to PSRC, uh, perhaps the appropriate motion as a substitute motion would be to refer back to PSRC without a date certain and to allow that body to, uh, figure out when it can meet and, uh, take this up on its agendas and then bring it back to the council. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Would I be in order to make that motion?
Uh, you could make a substitute motion at this point in time, yes?
I would make a substitute motion to refer this back to, uh, PSRC.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Alder Heck, is that a second? Alder Harrington McKinney?
That is a second.
All right. Thank you. All right. So it's been moved and seconded to refer to PSRC. Uh, Alder Skidmore, did you wish to speak further to the motion?
Uh, yes, I'll just speak briefly that it, it's my intent to allow PSRC to, uh, uh, weigh in on this subject. I know that there have been comments made by the chair that there hasn't been an opportunity and, uh, Alder McKinney as well. And I would, uh, just hope that it would be accepted in that spirit. I don't think there's a rush to implement this or, uh, prove it tonight without full consideration. So that's the intent of the, uh, uh, motion. That's all.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, no, I seconded.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask, uh, one of the, the sponsoring Alders, I, I guess, about any implication of delaying this. Should it be another two or three months until this is able to be, uh, heard by PSRC and then come, coming back to council? If it, if it were to be two or three months, uh, maybe Alder Kemble can answer that. I don't know. Is there, are there any implications that you're aware of, negative implications?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Kemble. Hmm, sorry, Alder.
Implication, am, am I live?
Yes, go ahead.
The implication would be that it would be really tough to get, if, if it were delayed too long, it would be tough to get the provisions of this synced with the budget process, which, you know, when we, when we finalized this early this year, we were hoping to have it passed and in effect, um, in time for the budget process so that it would not be an undue burden on departments requesting to purchase new surveillance equipment. Um, and we, we devised what we thought was a pretty seamless process with the budget. So if it's delayed, that would mean the effective date would be pushed back. Um, and that would not be, we would not be in sync then with the budget and then departments would need to do one-off, uh, requests. So I understand, I'm not against PSRC, um, uh, having a third crack at this. I understand they had really full agendas this spring. I was there twice presenting, um, and I'm not against that. I, I would have been against postponing it until October, which just seems an arbitrary date to me. Uh, one of the provisions of this proposed ordinance is that it won't go into effect until ninety days after it's enacted. So that was to give departments three months' time to understand, um, and integrate the request for surveillance equipment into their, their, uh, routine processes. Having said that, most of the departments, we worked very closely with them for two years, especially MPD, to devise this ordinance and to understand their processes for purchasing and utilizing and accessing, um, surveillance equipment. So there, this is nothing, this is not going to be anything new to any department that has surveillance equipment. They've been part of the conversation for two years. Um, so while, you know, I won't oppose a re-referral to PSRC, I just hope that they do get to discuss it in the way they would like to discuss it, um, next month and that it can come back to us as soon as possible.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Yeah.
Sorry, Alder, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, uh, thank you, Alder Kemble. Um, we've been discussing, uh, body worn cameras and surveillance for quite a while and, um, to not have the public, uh, Public Safety Review Committee weigh in on this discussion, uh, would, uh, not be okay. And I, and I'm glad that the Alder did not stand, I, I was not in favor of the October, uh, deadline in terms of referral. But we do, as a member of the Public Safety Review Committee, want to have a full discussion of this so that we can make a recommendation. And a recommendation coming from the Public Safety Review Committee related to this issue is very, very important. And it would be, um, uh, our, um, our hope, not our hope, but it will be our intention to make sure that this lands on our agenda so that we can fully discuss it and bring it back to, um, the council with a full recommendation from the Public Safety Review Committee. And hopefully that will be in line with the Alder's concern of being, um, uh, completed in time for budget considerations.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter.
Thank you. I would like, if it's appropriate at this time, to remove the October.
The, the motion before us is to refer to PSRC without a date, uh, because Alder Skidmore, uh, moved and that was seconded.
Okay. So, okay, we'll, we'll deal with that first.
Anything further, Alder?
No, I was gonna, um, rescind my motion to have it in October, but I'll wait.
Thank you. All right. So the motion before us is to refer this item back to the PSRC. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral to PSRC? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of referral to PSRC. And just for form's sake, Alder, do you want to, um, rescind the original motion?
Yes, at this time, I would like to rescind my original motion of, uh, extend referring this to the, uh, first October, uh, council meeting. Thank you.
Is there any objection? I assume not, considering the previous vote. So thank you all. And that item will be referred back to PSRC. And we will move on to item number ninety-one. President Carter, a motion?
Yes. Move to adopt item ninety-one, six oh two two six.
Let's see. Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer an amendment. I, I sent it out to my colleagues, the email, it reads as follows, it's adds two, uh, short clauses. Be it further resolved, this acquisition shall be for the express purpose of advancing affordable housing, business creation and assistance, and retail retention. The second clause that reads, be it further resolved, the end use of this parcel shall be aligned with the completed South Madison plan.
It's been moved. Is there a second to the amendment? Alder Kemble?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Alder Evers, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's my belief that if we are using TIF money for an acquisition like this as opposed to GR funds, that we ought to hold ourselves to a particular standard. We ought to, in a sense, tie our hands explicitly, uh, using TIF funds as, uh, instead of retiring a, a TID, uh, and applying that, uh, those funds, even for a good cause like land banking of this particular parcel. I think from our past experience in the city, it behooves us to, in effect, uh, remind ourselves of the purpose and the reason why we're doing this and, and, and in a sense constrain ourselves accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Alder Heck?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I have a question. Uh, I, I think it might be for Attorney May, uh, related to this, because I, I want to understand the implications of this. Uh, is it okay if I ask him a question?
Is there any objection to questions at this point? Seeing no objections, Attorney May, would you raise your hand, please? Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. I'm, I'm hearing about the language that Alder Evers is proposing. I, I support the, 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 uh, the goals, I think, of what he's trying to do. But, um, when we use language in, in this sort of resolution that says, uh, must be used to support affordable housing, um, you know, what, what if it's, uh, if a development is proposed that it's a mixture of market rate and affordable housing, um, would there, how would that be interpreted with regards to this resolution? And as we all know, uh, neighborhood plans, uh, often, uh, are, are used as guidelines, but pieces of developments don't necessarily exactly match what's in a plan. And so I just want to know if, if you think there would be wiggle room for, for things like that, should we adopt this substitute?
Well, if, if I understand the, um, amendments proposed by Alder, um, uh, Evers, the, it, it expresses the council's, you know, uh, idea that this is how we want to use the money in the future. And it ties your hands, but I don't think it puts you in a straitjacket. Um, you're going to have to at the time, when the time comes and you get a proposal in front of you, you will have to be the ones that decide, well, does this meet our requirement that it supports affordable housing or not? And when it comes in front of you, you're going to have to say, is this consistent with the South Madison plan, um, or not? So there is some discretion left in your hands at the time it comes back to you for final approval. Um, on the other hand, it's a very clear policy statement of this council's intent of, of why you're planning on, uh, land banking the property.
And, and also, just a quick follow-up. So if, if items are included on this, this parcel that, that are not supportive of affordable housing, yet maybe there is some affordable housing component, that still wouldn't be a problem. And if, if that's how council or plan commissioner or whoever interpreted it.
You would, you would at that time say, okay, it's got thirty percent affordable housing. Does that mean that we have a project that supports affordable housing? That would, that the council would have to say, yes, that's sufficient. Or no, it isn't. That would, the council would have to say, yes, that's sufficient, or no, it isn't, we think it needs to be higher at that point in time. The problem you would have is if you had some proposal that had no affordable housing in it, that clearly would not be supportive of affordable housing, and I think it's actually well-worded by the Alder because it expresses your intent without, as I said, putting you in a straitjacket.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter?
Yes, at this time, I would like to have staff address this amendment.
Alder, what staff would you like to speak? I think it looks like Dan Rolf wishes to speak.
Is Dan Rolf on the?
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Dan? Let's see, all right. There you are. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Carter, can you do me?
I can hear you.
Very good. Should this amendment be approved? This is something that would need to obviously conform with the South Madison plan, no matter how this plays out, so I think it's something that is workable in the context of the greater redevelopment efforts being made in South Madison. Did I answer your question correctly? Did I answer your question totally, or is there a piece that you?
Well, my concern is that we really, at this point, don't know what this parcel will be used, is it going to be part of a bigger parcel? This is just one parcel, so how do you foresee us going past this one property with this amendment attached to 18, I believe it's 1810?
Fair question, thank you. Alder, what I believe we would look at is, this would be part of a larger assemblage of property that would take place over a little bit of time as we move forward with South Madison redevelopment, so there would be the, this property and potentially additional ones, if you're familiar with that area, other Alders, there's the Old Metals Recycling, the Scrap Yard that's in South Madison in the same triangle, so there is the potential for a larger redevelopment of this, of this property, and having this particular verbiage attached to this piece, I think is something that is, in the context of a larger development of that entire triangle, I think it's something that is manageable. If the entire triangle were to have this attached to it, again, deferring to Attorney May, I think as long as there is some affordable housing included in it, the council could interpret that criteria to be met. Again, if there was, if it was to be entirely affordable housing, that might be a little more tricky, but as long as there is leeway within this for other uses to be included, be it a commercial, office, retail, market rate housing, I don't think that this provides anything more than a statement of what we've, what we've been talking about, about South Madison, as long as we've been talking about South Madison. So I think this is something that's eminently manageable, given the broader context that a redevelopment of the site would take place in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue at this time, so the question before us is Alder Evers amendment. It's been moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of Alder Evers amendment? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment, and that brings us to the underlying motion, which is to adopt. Is there any questions or discussion on the underlying motion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption with, as amended? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the item as amended, and that brings us to the end of our agenda today. Alder Moreland?
I move to adjourn.
President Carter?
I second that, but before we go, Happy Mother's Day to everyone, whether you have children or pets.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all, and good night.
Good night.